Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for our school board retreat. I will now hand it over to Dr. Stevenson.
Great, well, welcome, everybody. It's hard to believe when we sit, you know, and talked in July that December 12th seemed awkward far away. And it has gone very, very quickly. So this is kind of our mid-year check-in, so we'll be doing some check-in activities. And really, the bulk of our time will be kind of spent talking about what we want to do as we keep moving forward on setting some priorities for next year. So I've got slides, but of course, our discussion can, you know, stop and start anywhere along the way. We can spend as much time as we need to. And this won't be the only time that we're talking about this, but there are some dates that we need to set. We need to make some decisions about format or how we do feedback sessions, given the realities of, you know, wearing these things still and trying to anticipate what spring looks like, who knows? So we'll talk about that today, and then we can kind of keep going to really get things cemented. So what I did is, some of the things you'll see in our conversation are just reminders. And we won't spend a lot of time on it. But one of the things, as I was putting slides together, I think whenever you're looking forward, you have to say, does our current mission and vision match what it is that we want to do? In my mind, it does. So I'm not proposing that we work into this, any revisions to a mission or vision statement, because I think it fits very well. But I think you all need to weigh in on that as well, if it seems like it still is something that can carry us through into the next leg of the journey. Any thoughts on that?
Seems appropriate to me, yeah.
It's a great mission, whoever developed it. That was pretty when I was on here, but I think it, you know, adapts with what's going on today as well.
Good. So... I think it even dates me. (laughter) It was, I mean, truly, it's, you know, I don't think it changes our central purpose. And the things that go into all that, I think, change and grow and evolve, but I don't think that changes our purpose. So this was just kind of a reminder of today, building that bridge from what has been done into the next leg, and looking forward at a set of district priorities. I also think you've, we've talked about it already, that we have to kind of continue to look at what are internal organizational priorities? And what are those public-facing, big district priorities that are things that show what we're really paying close attention to over the next few years? And then planning for what this really looks like with the, you know, kind of nuts and bolts, the what, the when, where, and how of how we're going to accomplish this. I think I've got it later in my slides, but I was looking at some different models. And one of those models talks about this as our, I gotta look for the word, our enduring commitments. And I thought that's really kind of an interesting way of characterizing those things that we know we're always going to be looking at. We have an enduring commitment to graduation and to high achievement and to community engagement. Those things are going to be important no matter what. And then it's the, what are the specifics? So we've seen this slide before, where do we want to go? Again, it's those anchor metrics, any areas of need or areas for new growth that we kind of want to keep thinking about. And these were the four areas that the first strategic plan or the latest strategic plan was built around. I think we can keep these in place, but we can also be open to how we want to characterize, whatever it is that we determine are the priorities. I don't think we have to decide that now. I think we can easily line things up with these areas, but I think we can also start to see if something else emerges along the way. But this is just to kind of remind you. And then, of course, the things that we've talked about that we will always pay attention to. The priorities are those big things that we want to accomplish as a district. The metrics are those anchor metrics that we've talked about. And then indicators, to me, are a little bit different. Metrics are usually statistical percentages, looking at actual growth. But indicators are things that tell us we're making progress. And those might be action steps, those might be time-bound kinds of things. But they're what tells us we're getting done what we said that we would do. And so just kind of think about that in context today. You've seen this before. This is that whole picture of how things flow in our district. And the one that we're really paying closest attention to today are those big district priorities, knowing that those impact all of the things that happen all the way through. And then, of course, we've talked about kind of the continuous improvement model. How does that, what are we planning to do? What are we doing? What happens with what we said we were going to do? And then what does that tell us for kind of the next leg of the journey? So I think as we think about what's coming next, it's those organizational priorities that come out with school improvement plans or PDSA plans and our department PDSA plans. What are those things that are specific to what we're doing on a daily, regular basis in our schools and in our departments? That's that internal look. And most of those are going to be tied to those anchor metrics. And here's where I had that example. Those enduring commitments lie largely in this internal work. And then the district priorities are those measures with progress indicators that might be new program development, might be a big initiative that we have in our district for something. And these two have to, of course, all play into our accountability to our community and to our families. And so I think it's good to just think about how do the things that we talk about today fit within those? I'm not going to spend time on these, but these were those anchor metrics that I said kind of already exist. We can determine if these are the right ones, if there's anything that needs to stay or go or be added to. We put career and college readiness in yesterday just because the state is going to probably ask for some more indicators. So these were those different areas, climate and culture, district staff, and community engagement. So that just kind of sets the stage. And so what I want to start with is looking at things that have emerged. These are not set in stone, but as we talk internally and say, what are the things that we know are still really high priorities? What are the things that have emerged either from the work that's already happening or been happening? Maybe it's indicators just from this year with what we saw this fall when we did our assessments. What are things that are already kind of set in motion just from my being here and what I've asked and what our department leaders have said need to be priorities? So I've got three slides, and we'll go over these. And then I also have the list that the board has talked about already. And so as we think through these, it's kind of going to be a combining of what we all see together and some discussion, as well as maybe some things we haven't thought about. So one of the first things is something called MTSS, and that's multi-tiered systems of supports. We also may want to call this just our Sioux Falls School District System of Supports, because people get really hung up on acronyms. And one of my pet peeves is that as soon as you bring in an acronym, people think you're doing something different or something new. And that's not necessarily the case. But you've heard of RTI, which is Response to Intervention. What do we do when kids need academic supports? What are our systems that help us know when do we need to do an intervention or an assessment for maybe support services and special ed? That coupled with PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, which is more of those behavior-supporting things like routines and procedures. Does every student know what's expected in our hallways and our classrooms or in the lunchroom? Second tier is when kids need more support. Maybe they're struggling with their behaviors on a more regular basis. And tier three are those programs that support those intensive behavior needs. Might be a specialized support, might be what you do within the school day for a student, but it's because of intensity, frequency, and duration of behaviors. Those two things now have kind of been married up and placed under the umbrella of MTSS. And that's why I have the little umbrella there. And so some people think, oh, MTSS, it's brand-new coming in, and now we're going to throw out these other things. It's really that umbrella that says, here's how we support kids in all of those areas, things that our social workers do, our counselors, behavior specialists, special ed. All of that is encompassed. And what we have said is, within that, one of the areas that we know needs some attention is realignment and revising of our behavior supports, whether that's programs, where those programs are positioned, what the strategies are, the framework that's used within those programs. That needs to be a high priority, because we don't feel like they're quite where we would like them to be and need some supports. And we'll come back to that and have people talk specifically. Then academic supports, that's the A side of MTSS. The things that we've all probably talked about that fall within that area are any pre-K programs that we want to expand or develop. So right now, that's junior K, that's preschool, that's anything that we do, birth to three. What does that look like moving forward? Primary reading and math are still academic areas of concern that we want to pay attention to, particularly what we saw in the fall with some of that lost learning at the early grades and then how that flows up and into what we may see for many years. I think that's one of our unknowns, is what's the COVID effect going to be as we watch our learners moving forward? These next two kind of go together. Middle-level electives kind of flow back from what we also are doing with career pathways and expansion. Is that articulation? And then what does that look like in a middle level for interest and for kind of the connection to what then students have available in high school? Language programs and supports, we've talked about. Where do we go moving forward with dual language, language immersion, as well as the needs of our English language learners? And so kind of positioning all that together under that academic support. And then online learning, oops, I clicked instead of pointed. Online learning is really something we have to think intentionally about. And Teresa and her team are already doing that. But this year, it was provide this because we don't want to be here. And we know that moving forward, we have to feel really good about what we are going to offer online as a really good, solid learning option. And what do those models look like if we're going to continue to do that at elementary, middle, and high school? What do we do for flexibility? What do we do for an alternative course offering and the timing of it? What do we do for check-ins and making sure that we still keep kids on track? Because we know that's been something that we've struggled with. And every district, I think, that's done online learning this year knows that part of the casualty of that is keeping kids connected. And what do you do when they're not connected, when you can't bring them onsite in the same way? Then, of course, we've got socially-emotional learning to think about and continuing with our work around culturally-relevant practices. So within kind of those student programs, those are some of the things that have emerged. So I'm going to stop there until we have some discussion on this before we go to the next area. Thoughts about these, what lines up, what doesn't line up? Or questions for staff within any of those areas?
No, I think just the one thing, when I was looking through some, just some of our notes on our current things is making sure that, you know, we have a priority of the things at the early level, like the reading and math stuff, knowing that the time and effort that we put in at that level is going to be hopefully amplified as they go up in the grades. And so that's not to say that we are going to focus only on elementary, because certainly there are things that need to be done. So I appreciate that we have the mid-level electives and the career pathway articulation and expansion, because I think that's more of that, you know, we have to meet our people where they are and how can we help to engage them and challenge them when they're in that middle level and get them then to graduate and take AP classes and take the ACT and all those other things that are important to us. And so I think that's a really good list of early, middle, and then those high school-age kids, too.
Yeah, because as we know, that in our public real life, we really do have children in our community, birth through 21.
Right.
And so we do need to make sure we can help set them up for success through that entire level and meet them where they are when they come to us and allow us to provide those successes, whatever those may be to them.
One of the things that, you know, I was just reading something this week that reinforced it. And just, you know, you don't know me very well yet in terms of educational philosophy, but you can't just tell people, you know, raise scores, raise graduation rates, raise academic rates. And I don't think that's happened in this district. But if you do the right things in the right places all the way along, those things should follow. And that's the result of making sure that we've put all kinds of things in place, which, you know, may not make their way onto this list. That's just part of our work, too. But when we really think about a focus, it's what are those supports for the whole child, for the academic pieces and everything? And the end result is good things happen for what we see kind of in how we assess that. But one of the questions that we have is, what is that going to look like? What does that look like, what might normally produce increased achievement? What does that look like over the next three years? And what does that look like for the students who have been in a virtual setting as they come back into the regular setting? We're trying to do some assessment work on that right now. There are a lot of question marks around that. That doesn't mean we don't do those things, but I think some of the things that may bear out in normal ways, it will be really interesting to see what we see over the next five to 10 years even. What does a first grader from last year look like when they're an 11th grader or 12th grader? Maybe we won't see any significant issues, but I don't know that that will be true or not.
I'm glad that being intentional about online learning, because I don't think that's going to go away regardless of what happens over the next three years.
I think that's an area, too, where if we hear from our community, what do people really want? I think we've kind of done what we know we can do, and we have some idea. But I think that's an area where we really need to get some good, solid feedback, both from our internal audience as well as our externally audience. Do people value that in the way that we think they do here in Sioux Falls? Or have we not thought about a model that maybe we need to consider? So I think we're very open to what that can look like. What's tricky about that is, you know, we're already trying to plan for next year. And so when you talk about kind of a multi-year project, I think this is definitely a multi-year project that we need to think about. What does that look like over the course of two and three years for what we offer?
I agree, because, you know, it arose because of COVID. You know, our implementation of online learning. But now going forward, as Todd said, I agree, it's here to stay. It basically pushed us ahead faster than we were maybe any district was ready to with online learning. But now that we're in that atmosphere, we need to start looking at other ways we might need to do this. You know, I forwarded that article that maybe the vaccine won't even be available for children until after the school year starts in the fall. So that's probably still going to be a component. Families, we need to have online learning because of their health risk. But then we are also looking at, are there other ways we can successfully educate our children who online learning might be a better platform for them because of maybe either, you know, fear of going to school? You know, they might have a behavioral thing or other things that might do that. So how do we do that with 25,000 students and make sure we're still doing well as well in our in-school programming and making sure we have those check-in points? So those kids who are at home learning are being kept up and, you know, having other opportunities for them if they aren't able to keep up.
So now I look up from just a very pragmatic standpoint, is snow days. In the past, snow days, just for that, you're taking the day off. And now with the online learning, how we rethink snow days? How that fits in the back of the calendar?
Yeah. Why, we have to be careful with that one, because, you know, there's some childhood joy that comes with a snow day.
Yeah. So... As well as teacher joy, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, we've walked down that road a little bit, as you know, just to see what's the tone of that. And we kind of have said, we'll hold with that until maybe a need presents itself differently. You know, if we're looking at tacking on three, four, or five days at the end of the year, the need might feel different. But to just do it, to do it, we've said, well, we think we can. But, you know, an interesting thing, I was talking with Deb Mullenberg yesterday, is when we say those virtual days, what does that look like for special education? That's a different picture than maybe it is for students who don't receive those services. And that's on us, too, as we look at this down the road, to think about what does that opportunity look like for all students in a virtual environment? And can we really put all of the supports in necessary to say, we're offering this as a district, and you can have a quality experience no matter what kinds of supports you need? So that's a lot, and, you know, there's just a lot emerging now around professional learning for teachers to do this. They were kind of flying blind initially, and now you're starting to see all kinds of PD coming out. And we've got some teachers who are really doing a great job with it. So will they want to do that more than a year? I don't know. That's the other thing, is how do you develop that kind of part of your teaching cadre for that specific environment? Comments?
The behavior portion of that, the top one, we did this past year go through and reviewed the Joe Foss program. And obviously, it changed from using the Embudsmen platform and went into a platform that we developed on our own. And just in the first four months here, three, three-and-a-half months, we've seen a significant growth in credit terms, attendance. Deb and I just pulled the attendance rates for the first three months, and it significantly increased over the previous year of actual in-person attendance, which is ironic considering the situation we're in. And the number of students that are going over to take the CTE minis and things like that. Now, the Joe Foss program is not a behavior program. It's an alternative education setting. But we see many of those same things that we believe we start to utilize in some of our behavior programs, because the attendance in those programs is very low. And so there are just different things there we need to do. Plus, looking at those students, who would be more appropriate in some of those settings rather than in a traditional high school setting of 1,800, 1,900 students? And so really look now at that second phase of backing into the Flex Odyssey, which is with middle school, the structured teach program, to see what we can change in there and revitalize that to help those students and maintain safety in our schools and other school settings.
I just think that's awesome, because I don't know, Todd, if you were on that part during the ASB SD delegate assembly. They, a couple of schools were pushing to push ASB SD to lobby to move the age back to 16, to the previous, instead of 18 for the graduation rate. And I just, and right before that, we had just pushed to include all students, changed our mission to include all students in our education. I said, I don't understand why you're doing this. I do understand it's hard. We have kids who don't want to show up until they're absent, because you don't have their programs. But we, that's our job, is to find out how we can connect with those children. So thank you for doing all of these things for our students, because that is our job. We need to find what is going to connect with them to do this, so.
And you're right on. A lot of that is, is what different things do we need? Because just as the model of the Joe Foss, we have one delivery process there. And once we diversified that, because some even had wondered would it work to have a traditional, a little more traditional teacher level? We have short blocks that really didn't focus on the standards. And the students are truly enjoying that. Those sessions are full and they're earning credits. And so to go from, maybe traditionally, you'd have 50 minutes, and then they switch class, 50 minutes, switch class. For these, are six weeks long, and the kids go a little bit longer time period. But then they go to an online class after. So they get that transition piece, or they go to their job position or over to the CTE class. And so it's just to give them some options as well. And we're seeing that's been very productive for them.
About the elementary level and our behaviors, yeah?
We did go through the elementary and look a year ago. Now, there's always things to improve upon. But we did go through and look at that in the process of referrals to our behavior program with the elementary. And we changed some of that structure and some of the processes. And so we do have that in place right now. And I think that has helped us to better identify the students that need to be there. There's still some tweaking to that that we're going to go through and continue to look at, but the training that they're having. Now, we also are taking a group of individuals to look at some other programs in other locations, including Linkin Nebraska. But that'll be elementary, middle school, and high school. They'll go to visit that to see what other things we can continue to incorporate. They have a little more of a structured model and by far better attendance rates than the middle school, and middle school by far a better attendance rate than the high school, which is typical, but not maybe the extreme that we're seeing the drop off in attendance at the high school. And I think a lot of that has to do with what we need to change in that program.
Do you want to talk about what's already kind of happening with the career pathway piece?
So the career pathway met with the counselors and really started to define what we currently offer and to align those pathways and to create a visual for students. And so that way, if I want to take something with cybersecurity, these are the courses I should start with in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th. And ninth is pretty, we're pretty tied into what the students take at ninth grade, but then how's it help to develop into, as I go through my years in high school? And so really working on those for each of the career clusters that we have. And they've done a nice job on that. And they're really starting to additional conversations with business partners on how we can work together with STC and offer opportunities for students. But it's a K-12 lens, so what can we do? And we chose health careers to start. And what can we do with STEM at the elementary level to help support them in the summer? And then how do we do a mobile unit that would come out to neighborhoods in the summer for middle school kids and even high school, some scrub camps, things like that? And then as they move into high school, they get more in-depth. So it's CTE, STC, and then they can start some dual credit or concurrent credit opportunities with whomever. It could be USD, SDSU, STC, all those entities, whoever meets those needs. So those are some conversations we're starting around that. But just really trying to get kids excited about it early and thinking about science and math. And then that can take them many different ways. And then we can help to create those pathways that shoot off into different careers for kids. So that's exciting. Primary reading and math, we piloted Math Fluency just two weeks ago. And so it's a different type of math test that really pones into what we're teaching in SIPS, because that's the, our concern is, how do we assess that program? We can say it works antecdotally by looking at where the kids are. And the teachers will say, wow, they're better readers than they've ever been. But math really gets into those, and the fluency test really gets into those foundational skills and really aligns well and gives teachers great feedback. The students have a microphone, and they record, it's recording their fluency and their comprehension. So then the teacher can go back and listen to it. And also, we found some great things where even a speech therapist listened to the recording and picked up on a few cues. And so we're going to have, they just finished that up. We'll test, we'll close our testing window next Friday. And then Doug and Nicole and my team and EL and SPED, we're all going to sit and look at that data to see, is this a better measure for our K-2 students than the math group? And so really looking at that, or is it K-1? But I said, watched kiddos taking the test. And, you know, there's, good job. Lots of positive reinforcement for those kids as they're taking it. So I saw somebody from beginning letter names to reading full passages. And then we looked at the feedback, and the feedback says the next thing they need to work on are the silent E. And when we look at where they're at with their SIPS lesson, that's exactly where they're going. And they're two different, you know, that's a norm reference test. So that's reaffirming to us that that Math Fluency is measuring what we're doing in SIPS, and it provides that great feedback. So we're going to see where that comes in at. Middle-level electives, we were just with middle school last week and started talking about, we've had these electives for a very long time. So is there something different? And so they're starting those discussions. And online learning, that is... And online learning, that is, how do we develop a virtual academy moving forward? As Dr. Salem referenced, you know, we're planning for next year and we really have to work together. We'll work with Dr. Noel on policies and Brett, because we'll have to have a policy in place for that virtual. We'll have to work with the state and then what's that curriculum look like? We're having listening sessions next week with the staff that are teaching that virtual academy so we can listen to that. Students moving into virtual academy for second semester. We have Thursday night, we have a parent event for elementary families. And then we have a rep from the company, from Calvert, but we also have parents on there to talk to parents and teachers. And so it'll be really fun to just listen to that. But then that helps provide us feedback also on how we move forward. And then we'll do some parent listening session as we develop that for next year. But yes, what's that lens look like? We know some families want flexibility to be able to travel and do whatever, but some also want that connection to the school. So, so we do know that we'll have to have multiple models to help promote our learners. But overarching, we have to feel really good about the pride we put out there because it's had to be called a district name on it. And we want those learners to succeed just like they do in the classroom. So we want them to feel good about those diploma they walk away with if they're in online learning.
We still saw that with the, the high school's been utilizing online for years in Joe Foss, obviously. And there's still a significant need in that because the bulk of the credits even in Joe Foss are still coming through the online. It's just that the HECs classes or the traditional taught classes, the teacher led classes have helped to support that to kind of fill some of those gaps where students would start to drum down a little bit in the online portion of it. It helps them to be able to get some of those little harder classes, some of the math classes and a few of the science classes. But there's still definitely, definitely a need for the online portion of that. And then not part of that academy is, is also that incorporation of the hybrid classes that at least two of our high schools are utilizing right now. I had, had for a couple of years now, one just this year and the other one started a year ago. And students are finding great success and that's just part of that different ways to be able to meet the needs of the students.
So they could, they could do some online, completely eight hundred percent online and then do some hybrid where they're in the classroom a couple of days a week and in and out, but they still have that school connection.
Here again is how do we articulate all that? So if you're a family looking at our school district or you're looking at as a need changes or as interest changes, how can you see very clearly what is your online option? What's the benefit? How is it delivered? What's the material or the teacher component of it? Is it just a self-directed course or is there a teacher component to it? We've talked about, you know, high school courses. Do we need to really look at more of a collegiate model where you see, okay, I need to take high school chemistry. I can take it at my high school in person. I can take it online. I can take it at two thirty in the afternoon online because this teacher is offering it or I can take it at ten o'clock in the morning and it's offered by this teacher and maybe they're in different high schools. And it's becomes kind of agnostic in terms of the who and the where. It just is available and you can choose it. To do that, of course, you know, there's a lot behind all that with the logistics of that because right now we have kids organized by school. And so if we want to say, we're going to do this whole other real virtual school, that means it has to be identified as such by the state. We have to change how we do registration. We have to know what that means for staffing and then not have the ability to predict from year to year even necessarily, what does that do for that enrollment? You know, as we come away from COVID, does that have less students in it? As we come away and more want the flexibility, does that mean more? So there's a lot of unknowns. It's good questions and it's good thinking, but it's not just as easy as, okay, we're going to do this. So if that becomes one of our priorities, that's a, again, a multi-year kind of a, of a look.
And I wonder, going back to the first one, when we talked about the career clusters and so forth, you know, I've been always wondering if at Jefferson we should do the block scheduling and now I'm hearing all this, I wonder, well, maybe all of our high schools should go to block scheduling to allow that opportunity. And I don't know. I, that's just truly a question, you know, do, is that something we need to look at to fully use CTE and STC and college abilities as well as allowing those high schools those ability? Then they don't be on that same schedule to allow that to do that. But that's truly a question.
I think that's another really good question to ask in the forums that we have is, you know, not everybody knows about what the differences are then between that, but the ability to have flexibility in other ways, is there a benefit to looking at a different model? It's a huge project with looking at what that impact is on staffing and, you know, other schedules with shared staff particularly. And I don't know how much that is at the high school compared to maybe elementary where you share music teachers or art teachers and some of those things. But again, that's a multi-year project if that becomes something that we want to take a look at. I've told you about one of the models that I saw a couple of years ago now where it was a multi-high school district. I think they had sixteen high schools, had a really large career academy, but they were able to schedule kids in a certain way because all sixteen of those high schools had the same schedule. They were on an A-B block. But they could do some things that they wouldn't have been able to do with transportation and staffing and schedules because at least they were working from the same variable with the schedules, which I do think is important. So we'll see what that.
With the online learning, I mean, do, do we think we could, as we develop that and understand it better, like you were saying, Teresa, would that offer up more opportunities for students in the summer? Do we think potential there?
That's a good question, Kate. And as we look at it, that right now we do have limited offerings in the summer. So that would be something we would have to look at is do we open it up so that way they could take more of the hundred percent online courses in the summer?
Good question.
It all comes under that flexibility. We'll never call it that.
I mean, like, you know, I think we all, you know, those of us that all, that still have students and, you know, I mean, I'd love for Jack to take a class out at CTE, but knowing that he needs, you know, a double block to do that, then that takes away a class that he's taking, he could take a credit, he could take, you know, so it opens up opportunities, I think.
The bulk of our summer classes right now are online and so majority of those that are taken are online. Several of the in-person classes with the speech is generally going to be in person. And although we have had a separate version of that as well that we've created and then many of our EL classes are going to be in person. And so just part of that would, would the language learning portion of that.
And summer typically has been credit recovery.
It has been.
There's a small section that for advanced. Maybe expand that to, you know, not credit recovery, you know, picking up a class that is available for.
And those exams are still offered. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say just true opportunities. Additional classes, they could take credits.
Remediation, acceleration and just interest-based and engagement type purposes. I think if we look at summer opportunities a little differently.
I think those exams are still proctored, as of last summer, the exams are still proctored. So they have to travel out to.
CTE. And they will, they would have.
So generally speaking, the, the teacher out there for the summer school online classes that anyone could take would be located out there, but when they take their test, maybe then would need to go out there and take that test one day, week or two days or every other week to be able to complete that. And then a lot of the recovery coursework is done at the high school with a smaller number of teachers and teachers put that recovery work together for those students. They come in and complete it there in the classroom. Because many of which has maybe finished the quarter, so half of the, the unit and only have the other half, so we don't have to redo the whole thing like a full online course. They'll just redo the, retaste and then complete and learn the concepts that they have missed. And so a lot of that is not a, it's just recovery where they may not be doing the whole thing all day.
So flexibility is a theme. You've heard me all talk about what I'd kind of like to see us do to envision our whole career avenue as kind of a comprehensive program enhancement. But then we also have to think about transportation and how we can take some of that and push it back into our areas or our neighborhoods so that we're not solely dependent upon a student's ability to get out to that, you know, kind of far western strip. And, and I think a combination of both, but we do have a unique opportunity, I think, out there with what exists now and what's going to exist and what could exist. So I would suggest that's maybe kind of a long-term project that we think about, taking what we already have and enhancing it. I think it could be really exciting. And we have so many willing partners. We already are engaged with many of them, but we've got more. And being really clear about what we have so we know what we also want to do. I think when we talk with our forums, that's one thing we need help with is what do, what do we want to dream about moving forward? Here's the, the pieces we have that are going really well. What do kid want, kids want? And I think that's an area too, when we talk with students, that will be fun to hear from them is what have you wanted to do that we don't have? What are you doing that we do have that you love and more kids want to be able to do it? And what do we dream about, you know, needing to do based on what the workforce and, and employment needs are of our community over the next ten years?
The language programs and supports, twofold, you know, our EL programs, we have probably developed the same amount of students in EL currently as we have in IEP, correct, in our district. And we have a district director for that, but we don't for EL. So I wonder if it's time we need to look at something like that because I feel like at the elementary level especially, there's a lot of disconnect. Some teachers feel like there's just, they, they don't know if everybody building wide in elementary or is doing the same type of programming in those, especially when they leave EIC and come out to their buildings and so forth. So I'm wondering if that's something we need to look at, especially now that we have this large number of students. And if, I don't think that's going away and we, we need to continue to support them. And then I, you know, something that came up during our boundaries discussion was the long-term planning for the dual, the two-way version, I have to use the right term, immersion programming with Spanish, to make sure that we always have space enough and it's, it's thoughtful space where they're going to be located in their programming and so forth.
And just part of Demi Moon, because she's a director, so part of her, that is part of her, that EL.
Okay.
And so, but that's good to really develop that.
Make, making sure it's very soft.
Yeah. And then Kirk is the world manager.
Yeah, so that's one question that I have too, moving forward. I don't think we know yet. We don't know what funding's going to do. We don't know, you know, if we're going to need to kind of live with what we have and and it's going well, but it's going to be oversight of programs as they grow, as we add. If we go down the road of wanting to add more early childhood opportunities of one kind or another, at some point, is that worthy of somebody doing direct oversight just with early childhood? Or maybe you combine English language and early childhood and scoop things together a little differently? That's just ongoing organizational development and, you know, our attendance or our enrollment took a little bit of a back step this year, not much, but if that continues to pick up, I always think we have to consider the growth of the district with what happens at buildings and that's our first priority. But to make sure those programs are going well and have the oversight needed, we also have to think about the infrastructure that supports that at the district level. And we're always faulted because, you know, you're too top-heavy and too many administrators. But if we're going to ensure quality, we have to think about both sides of that. So that's something we're always thinking about and then it's what's the reality of what we can and can't add, but we need to be intentional. And so I appreciate that comment, just in terms of the relationship to quality and what we have for oversight. Can you talk just a little bit, Teresa or Jamie, about what we've done for culturally relevant practices and just kind of where we are right now with what we believe is the future?
We have more, we'll share a part of that. We have tried to work at that at the district level to continually put that at the forefront of our principal meetings and over the last few years and as well with our, our staff and the professional development that we do during the summer. Each one of our schools then in part of their school improvement plan has a portion of that that is directly related to culturally relevant practices that they incorporate. Because each one of our schools has had a little different place in that process. And so they've incorporated that into their school improvement plan. We continue to provide tools. And so at the, the central offices, we're trying to continue with the PD and giving multiple different looks at, at things that they couldn't direct their attention to at the school. And then the school takes that information and looks at their data, see where their students are at, and then they create that into their school improvement plan.
Right. We started three years ago with USD and that partnership and they helped to train that task force team and that guiding team and then took that out forward. And like Dr. Noel said, our culturally responsive practices through the summer, through the summer symposium, we've offered multiple years of professional development that way. Last year, we had Anthony Mohammed here who worked on the achievement gap trap and really looking at our gap students and how do we help support all students and how do everybody in the building by recognizing the books we read, the, what's on our posters on our wall, just everything and how we bring that back in, but also looking at those achievement gaps to support all students and all staff. And then this year, we took, we're taking Anthony and Mohammed's work one step further and really working with our admin through general admin meetings. And it's, there's a video component to it so they can go in and watch some professional videos by speakers throughout that series. And then like Dr. Noel said, we want actionable items so that way what we do with them, they can take back and replicate with their staff. And so then we'll listen to them to see what our next step is. With that page training is a big part of it. And you've heard that page training, that word all along, and that's the piece that we train all our new staff. So all the high schools, Roosevelt's finishing that training this year. And our, all our middle school staff are trained and then really looking at how do we help infuse that into twenty-three elementaries? Because that's a big chunk of staff. They've had it, but in chunks, bits and pieces and each building at different levels. So then we're looking at next fall for our MO, our two MOU days, can we do some intense literacy and math instruction and page training at that elementary level? So then that way that helps support that ongoing work.
And our high schools last year, two of which, just because of the sheer number of trainers that takes to train that many staff, Lincoln and Washington went through that training last year with the page training and Roosevelt this year. And then we also included Joe Foss and.
CTE.
CTE and those other groups in there. So the middle school has really stayed up to date. The high school, we've gone through by the end of this year and then elementary's starting next year.
Then we want to put in a systematic approach so that way new staff would be trained. No, that first year is so overwhelming. And so can we put in a system so it's three days of training? So when they get done with their first year in June, they would do those three days of training. And so you'll see that come across when we.
And that was a key piece of it because that first year you don't know, well, you don't know if they get into it and get through that. And it just seems so much more relevant and especially when we spoke with the building principals, there's so much more relevance after they get through a first year to go over to that training. They've kind of then relayed back to the things that they know and see and what they could potentially change in their approach and then.
And all of that comes into what Jamie just said is, how does that influence your practice? How does that really come out in what we do in our classrooms and in our hallways and our programs? And you've heard me talk about one of the things that we want to do next year is really begin to, to capture the stories of our students and our staff around things that guide our work for culturally responsive practices. What does it feel like to be a student of color in our schools? What are the needs of families who come to us with a language or a knowledge barrier of just how school works in our country? And then that can go back in through that lens of the practices that we've learned about to say, how does that reshape what we do and how we do it? Because to me, we can, we can learn a lot of great things, but if we don't come back and say, how are we really using this to change what we do? You know, it's just, it's like I just said, the difference of offering programs, but not having every student be able to access those programs. And so we keep looking at things as, as it comes along. There are practices that are in existence that we probably need to redo because they aren't in alignment with what we need to do for our students and families. And I think people are becoming more aware of that. And I think people are becoming more aware of that over time. Some of those are really easy to change and some of those are a little more difficult if they're long, you know, deeply held beliefs attached to a practice or what we think is the best thing. Cultures about that, questions about that maybe? Yeah, it is. And it's, it's tied to maybe the next couple of slides. Anything else or questions about that? I, I wanted to just touch on social emotional learning has to stay in the forefront. When I hear that, you know, one of our large behavioral facilities is adding on a gigantic facility just for kids, it makes me a little bit sick really, just with the needs that that represents. And I know having toured there this year, you know, three times, four times as many patients this year compared to a regular year. And I don't think it's going to stop just because the current situation stops. We have families that are suffering. We have things that are the fallout that are going to be multi-years into this. And so I think it's on us to know what we have to retool for supports or add to. And, you know, that, that may need to look different for us too. One of the things, I think I've talked with all of you at one point or another and that we've spent just a little bit of time on is our current model. You know, let's just take high school counselors, for example. They're largely focused on coursework, keeping kids on track for graduation. Then we've added on career planning and helping students, you know, identify what they want to do post-high school. Then we've added on the, the pieces of the mental health supports and helping connect families or social workers help with that too. But at one point, at what point do we need to say, we need to look at maybe a fundamental different role to address some of the things related to mental health and wellness or bring in a different resource? We have great partnerships and we'll continue to build those. But, you know, what do we maybe need to redefine rather than kind of trying to use the same model that we've always had? Well, the variables have changed around us. And so I think that's a question that's another good one to ask our forums. Say, you know, where are the needs being met and where aren't they? And what aren't we thinking about? We're not licensed mental health practitioners, but hopefully we can get some to be part of that work and parents can tell us too, what's, what's happening with their own child. But I think that deserves some attention.
I completely agree. I mean, the last N S B A, we went to several of us kind of focused on the mental health sessions because, I mean, well, we had also just had a, an incident with a student just, I think while we were there or right before, suicide. And, you know, that is just, it's, it's very real in our community and it is something that we, I feel strongly about addressing and focusing on. Because our, our kids are hurting, our families are hurting, not just because of COVID, they were hurting before. And then it's just sort of exacerbated the whole thing.
We're asking too much of our counselors, I think, right now. I think trying to get help my kid with how to be on track for post-high school. And then I'm having trouble in the hallway and I'm depressed and the bullying and whatever. It's just too much for, I think there has to be somewhere, somebody that does triage for the mental health.
I think I would like to some, and I don't know if it would be part of like social emotional learning or if it would be something in academic, but I feel like we would be doing our community and our kids a great favor by adding something along the lines of digital citizenship. And I think that if we could get more people of all ages to understand the impact of that and how do you appropriately act online and what are the downstream effects of that? And so that's cyberbullying, that's posting things when you are applying to colleges. That, I mean, I think that that is such a huge realm. And I don't know if you, you fit that into English classes. I don't know if you, if it's an elective, is that in middle school? I mean, I feel like a lot of those bad habits kind of start in middle school. And so when we think about how can we best prepare our kids to succeed in a changing world? I mean, nothing more has changed than the content of things that are online. And I, I read a lot of stuff and I mean, I think to me, a lot of the mental health challenges that we have are a result of things that are going on online. And parents aren't well-equipped because they don't understand the technology. And so how can we help our kids to help themselves and understand the addiction of that and appropriateness of the long-term effect? So I don't know where that fits in, but I think that that would be a, you know, even think about the news. Like, how do you know that something's fake? How do you check a, check a, check a source to say that's not valid? You know, and I think that those are critical thinking skills that unfortunately people are lacking for whatever reason. And so how can we help our kids to be better at that and be successful as adults and being able to discern things that are realistic, things that are fake, things like that?
Later on in, in one of these slides, I list what else aren't we thinking about that we haven't put, this kind of thing that emerged? I think a whole big category that we need to think about is technology and innovation. And within that, digital citizenship. And I'm sure we have components of that in different places, but ramping that up along with a more comprehensive picture of computer science instruction. And related to that, things that then flow out into things like electives at a middle school level with robotics and coding. And I know there's been kind of some fits and starts with coding, but I think that's just a whole area. We have some partners that are wanting to do more in that area. So I think that's a good forum topic, including digital citizenship. Unfortunately, we've got, you know, an entire world full of bad examples right now, which makes it more important than ever. Nan?
I was just listening to a thought leader in that realm. And what she was talking about specifically is kids that are using technology to numb those feelings. So that gets into the social and emotional part and the development piece and certainly the critical thinking piece. But the, the point was using technology to numb those feelings. And granted, there are various supports as well, stressors that each family has and each student and faculty and so on and so forth. There's not one person within our district that would not benefit with social emotional growth. On wherever they're at, I'm continuing. And then I, I do think in listening to that researcher, she made a really valid point in saying, you know, how are people in general, people within our district using technology to numb those feelings? They don't want to deal with on that particular day. So making that appropriate for the various age group of that child, developmentally a feeling that they would need to have to reconcile with in an appropriate way. And then, yeah, I don't know either which class that would fall under. I mean, it really, it really slices through an entire day and an entire career of a student and a family and a teacher.
Right now it's in, at, at the elementary level, it's embedded in with the library technology because that they teach the digital citizenship. And at middle school, then it really gets into that language arts where they're doing research papers. And again, is it a valid source? And that's how it pulls up in the high school also.
I think they touch on it too in, in.
Validation, self-validation.
Right, yeah. So I mean, it's, but you're correct. We do need, we know that it's everyone, you know, it's life, it fits right now.
Quite a bit of what you're talking about seems to be even more of the proactive decor thing start because we do have, you know, Southeast Behavior Health, we're up to well over 50 counselors now to come from there and provide services to our students and the PATH program. Avera, we just met with them, Patty Lake over in I had met with them and they're going to create some half-day programs now for some students that don't need to maybe be in Avera Behavior Health full-time, but need that additional support. But so many of those things are addressing needs and concerns once they start to turn into a more detrimental situation. And so much of this is proactive, of what we do before to help kids cope and understand and deal with some of the different things that come in contact with them.
It's the proactive and the reactive. And I think the difficult line that school districts walk, walk is what's our role and what's not our role? And what do you fund and what do we need to depend on our community to fund and provide? Because we can get kids referred.